... or two, we're still seeing some of the board members are gonna be here, so just hang in, I'll just give it a couple more minutes. Hi, good evening. Today is May twentieth, twenty nineteen, and we're gonna have the start of the planning and zoning agenda tonight. Number one is called order, roll call please.
Mr. Hesse.
Here.
Mr. Seaman. Mr. Mr. Stravopoulos.
Here.
Dr. Vessi. Ms. McCumber. Mr. Petron Tony.
Here.
Ms. Veal.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number two is the approval of minutes from April eighth, twenty nineteen, and April fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
I make a motion to approve minutes as written.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call, just can I do? Call in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Sorry. Yes, we can do that, how's that? Thank you. So, number three is the quasi judicial announcement and swearing in of speakers, so if any of y'all are speaking tonight, you'll need to be sworn in.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the planning and zoning board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria containing the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. The competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, and the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any ex parte communication or conflicts of interest tonight? No. Um, anyone that is going to speak tonight, uh, if you could please stand, raise your right hand to be sworn in. If you think you're to be coming up to the podium, if you think you might be speaking, just it's best to get sworn in now. Yes, sir, if you think you're... Yes. If you think you might be speaking, it's better off just standing up and raising your right hand and getting sworn in. You swear from the truth, you swear from the testimony about to give tonight is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So sworn. Um, and Chair, just to let you know for, uh, you have four members tonight, which is a quorum. Because there is less than a full board, if any applicant wishes to defer their application to the next meeting when a full board may be present, they have that right, um, you would need three affirmative votes tonight to pass anything. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we move on to application number eighteen seventy-four, site plan approval for development of a multifamily apartment development, Eagle Ridge Apartments on one point nine eight acres of land on lots thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty-eight B and C of Mrs. S. Sanford Parkin subdivision and lots nine and ten of Riverview subdivision located in the residential high T four C transect district of the special area plan. And can we have a background, please, from?
Yes. Um, this is, uh, site plan approval for Athens Place Apartments, uh, for thirty-six dwelling units plus recreational amenities. Uh, this is in the CRD Land Use District, T four C residential high zoning district. Um, this includes thirty-six apartments, uh, recreational amenities, including a swimming pool and picnic shelters, and accompanying parking, parking and drainage. And this is, um, over, um, basically on the corner of Athens and, and, uh, North Sanford Avenue. Um, again, this is in the special area plan of our, uh, our, uh, zoning districts in the T four C and in the Uptown Character District. Apartment buildings are permitted as a use by right in that district, and, uh, this, uh, project is consistent with the requirements of the T four C district. The technical review committee, uh, reviewed this project, uh, the last time on April fourth, twenty nineteen, and with, uh, some recommended conditions, uh, we found the project to be, uh, sufficiently in compliance, uh, to move forward. The project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. It's, uh, in compliance with the city's land development code. It has minimal, uh, new impacts to facilities and meets the city's concurrency management standards, and the ci- the project will, uh, be able to meet the city's building codes. Um, page three of the staff report, uh, provides the, um, facilities impacts for this thirty-six unit apartment complex, and, uh, staff finds that this application for site plan approval is consistent with the review criteria, and staff recommends approval of the site plan subject to the following conditions. The developer is responsible for meeting the minimum criteria, the land development code, and requiring all other jurisdictional permits and approvals. Uh, the construction plan shall be consistent with the approved site plan. All requisite fees attended to the project shall be paid in accordance with the land development code. The tree preservation plan and street screening shall be compliant with the requirements of the land development code prior to a construction permit being issued. And prior to the issuance of the construction permit, the project must address to the city's satisfaction all of the city comments regarding the applicant's proposed, proposed plan for handling of stormwater runoff as outlined in the comment, the city's comment memo. The proposed plan for handling of stormwater runoff will require a modification of the Southwest Florida Water Management District permit for the project, and a copy of that, uh, permit, uh, is required to be provided to the city. And number six, the site plan shall expire at one year from the effective date unless an application has been filed for a building permit. Uh, are there any questions?
Uh, a couple, I guess. Is the, uh, developer here tonight?
Yes, I see him in the audience.
All right, we may have some questions later for that. Okay. So, at this point, do I invite the public?
No, you're gonna invite the applicant.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to invite the applicant up, if you have something you want to talk about, uh, you want to explain any of this? Do we have any questions for the applicant? I have a couple. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address. Up at the podium, so we, please.
Nick Mavramatis, two thirteen High Street, Tarpon Springs.
Thank you. So, is this apartment complex, it looks like to be in a fairly low area? And I guess the issue then is with the swift mud and, and relocation of water runoff?
There are some questions about the runoff.
Okay. Will this be a section eight?
No.
Or, or for low income?
I don't believe, no, no, it's not. It's not, it's not our intention.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Um, I have a question regarding, um, number four and five under staff comments. Um, the modification, uh, the modified permit, is that included in this, or will that be presented at a later time?
That will be presented at a later time. Um, basically, the, the site layout, um, is, uh, acceptable and, and, um, our stormwater review, uh, indicates that there will be no changes to the site layout. So, th- these are some of the details, um, because of, I think, some difficulties, more so with the physical difficulties with the site that the engineers have to, have to finalize and work out. So, I can't get any more technical than that, but yeah.
Will they, will, will they have to come back to us then for zoning, or this will be?
Uh, they would have to come back only if the site plan itself, um, was, had to be modified in significant enough where it triggers going back through. We don't anticipate that. Um, that's why we brought the application forward at this time.
Okay, and you're asking us then tonight to approve just the, uh, the, that they're okay to build there? As long as they fulfill all of these requirements?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments from you, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, all right, any more comments from the board? Oh, nobody's there. Um, all right, so at this time, we'll close that and ask the public if anyone here would like to speak on any questions about this project? No. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, then at this point, uh, we'll close the public discussion, and any comments from the board? I mean, we certainly need more apartments and things in town, so I don't have an issue with that. Uh, so I guess I'll ask for a approval. Anyone have a?
I'll make a motion, thank you, for approval of this, um, application, um, where's the number?
Eighteen seventy-four.
That's seventy-four.
I believe we have to read that all out, correct?
Oh, resolution.
No, you can just say that, uh, if the board would like, a motion might be something to the effect of approve the application with staff recommendations, if that is what...
Right.
The board.
So you want to add in there, approved with the staff recommendations?
Okay, approved with, uh, the staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you. You'll hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Petron Tony.
I'll vote yes.
Ms. McCumber.
Yes.
Mr. Stravopoulos.
Yes.
Mr. Hesse.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next on our list, uh, we've had a revision. So, next on our list, number five is application number eighteen dash one fifty-nine, conditional use approval. Allow expansion of an existing mini warehouse, storage warehouse by converting sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-five square feet of commercial retail use to a mini warehouse. Use on four point ten acres of land located at seventeen thirty South Penniles Avenue in the Highway Business HB zoning district. And from what I understand, we don't have enough information on this tonight, so I'm going to pass on this one and we'll bring it up.
Yes, um, the, uh, city staff has had discussions with the applicant, and this will have to be continued, there is a, um, there are revisions to the plan made necessary. Um, short story is that apparently a portion of the site that the applicant came in for is actually, uh, not in the city's jurisdiction, and it's in unincorporated county, and no one, um, realized it, so, yeah, they are currently revising the plans, and we can continue this to date certain of June, your June seventeen meeting, because they will be able to come back.
Okay, I don't think we need a motion or anything for that. All right, thanks, that's done. All right, number six, application number eighteen dash one seven seven, amendment to a plan development. Amendment to an existing plan development, including preliminary development plan approval, amendment of the future land use designation from R slash O R residential office retail to I G industrial general, and amendment of the zoning designation from C P D, commercial plan development, to I P D industrial plan development in order to construct an automobile collision repair facility on two point two eight acres of land along the east side of US nineteen, approximately four hundred and twenty-seven feet north of Riverwatch Boulevard. Have staff comment on it?
Yes, and I do have additional materials to give you. I could just go ahead and hand those out now.
Okay.
I'll do that. Okay, what I've just provided is a, um, oh, aerial, uh, view of a site plan that the applicant provided um, after your packet was assembled. Um, and also the three comment emails that we received after your hard copy co- uh, packet was assembled. So you did receive those by email, but that's what I've just handed to you.
Okay.
So, this is a request to amend an existing plan development, um, including the preliminary development plan approval for that development, plus a future land use designation change from residential office retail to industrial general, and amendment of the zoning designation from commercial plan development to industrial plan development. And this property is located approximately four hundred and twenty-seven feet north of Riverwatch Boulevard on the east side of US nineteen. This is a two point two eight acre parcel, it is currently part of a larger nine acre parcel, or a little over nine acres. Uh, this parcel will be separated from the rest of that nine acres to complete this project. The future land use and the zoning amendments apply to the two point two eight acre parcel only. The rest of it will remain as is. The applicant intends to develop the property with an automobile collision repair facility within a new sixteen thousand nine hundred, nine hundred square foot building. This facility is consistent with the proposed zoning and the future land use designations. The countywide designation is currently retail and services. That designation will need to be changed to industrial. Uh, page three of the staff report, um, lists the, um, uses and densities and the standards for, um, the current and future, uh, the current and proposed future land use, and also for the current and proposed countywide categories. The larger parcel together, together with the current site of Northern, Northern Tool and Equipment were all the subject of one large commercial plan development in the past. Um, yeah, it was, it was, uh, two thou- around two thousand and seven that that CPD was approved. Obviously, uh, Northern Two was built, uh, the rest of it was never built, so that develop, uh, plan development has expired, it's almost like a master plan that has expired, so they would need to come back either way to develop the rest of that property. Uh, Northern Tool, just to give you a little bit more information, was, that parcel was split off. It is still part of the shared, um, facilities, but it, it was split from the, it was part of the, um, one, it was one large parcel, uh, previously, and Northern Tool was split off. This split of, of this, some current parcel that's coming before you, um, it would be a, a second split, which is why they have to go through site plan subdivision and plan development revision on this property. Um, yeah, so the, uh, so the applicant will be bordered by the leftover CPD zoning on either side, um, if this, this project, this, uh, rezoning is approved. The proposed plan development is compatible and consistent with development along this portion of, uh, the US Highway nineteen corridor, and, uh, the future land use map amendment from R O R to Industrial, uh, Limited is appropriate at this location. Industrial general, that should say. Is, with respect to the zoning, the I P D zoning designation is also consistent with the proposed I G future land use category. The uses proposed, again, adjacent to light uses along US nineteen, and is appropriate relative to the placement and orientation of surrounding uses. The I G district provides for the light industrial uses as a primary use. Um, with respect to, um, impacts to nearby uses, the project is proposed to operate on weekdays only with daytime hours. The work will be housed entirely within the building. Um, there will be, uh, traffic, um, uh, access directly from US nineteen, and there will be, uh, shared driveways on this with, uh, with the, uh, adjacent, uh, development. Lighting will be cut off so as not to impact residential areas. There's an existing eight-foot masonry wall bordering, bordering the rear of the property, and the applicant will be providing additional landscaping, uh, behind that wall. This area does back up onto the Riverwatch community, uh, as you can see from the aerial directly to the, it backs up directly to the common area of that neighborhood. Uh, the proposal and rezoning are judged to be compatible with, uh, surrounding uses in the nearby, um, residential area. This property is in an area of existing and planned commercial development along the US Highway nineteen business corridor, and, uh, water, sewer, and transportation capacity are available to serve the development. Public facilities, um, will not be, uh, degraded, and, uh, level of service will be met. Uh, the applicant did have to submit a transportation management plan. Uh, one of the things that we found in, or did not find in our research is that the original CPD apparently did not have a concurrency certificate vesting trips. So, the applicant did have to do, um, uh, trip generation, uh, estimates, and found that, um, it was, the, the proposal is two trips over our peak hour limit for having a transportation, um, management plan, so it's a relatively moderate to low trip generator as compared to, basically, what would have, what would have been at the site, the commercial. Um, and so, that, that's what, um, caused the applicant to have to do, uh, the management plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, TRC reviewed this application on March seventh. Um, your staff report includes all of the TRC comments and how those were resolved. Public notice was... Public notice was provided as required. Staff received five email correspondences, which have been provided. And I think the applicant has a presentation, and staff is also prepared to respond. I think the main, some of the main concerns were traffic impact, environmental, meaning the operation of the use itself, the noise, those sorts of things, lighting, and I think there was some concern about stormwater, so we'll be glad to address those and maybe hear from the applicant, see if, see if they can address those and answer some questions about what's going to be happening there.
Thank you. Is the applicant here tonight? Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Ed Armstrong. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hillward Henderson. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. I represent Cross Development. They have a contract to purchase the subject property. I think the combination of the staff report and the remarks of Ms. McNeese this evening, you know, very thoroughly explains what the request is. I would note the staff is recommending approval because, in their view, the application is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of your comprehensive plan, and we meet the other relevant criteria that we need to meet to justify an approval. I have two witnesses to present to you this evening. The first witness I have is Mr. Rusty Cohen, who is from Cross Development, and he's going to explain some of the background behind this request.
Again, please state your name and address, please.
Rusty Cohen with Cross Development, 4336 Marsh Ridge Road, Carrollton, Texas, 75010.
Thank you.
Okay. As Mr. Armstrong said, we're currently under contract to purchase the property. We represent Caliber Collision Autobody Shop. They're a national autobody center, just merged with a company called Abra Auto Glass as a first of the year. Took them over 1,000 stores. I've got a little overview of where they're at. They're located in 37 states, again, just over 1,000 stores, over 18,000 employees at their locations. Kind of their motto, and, you know, they know they get their customers kind of on a bad day when they've maybe had a, had an accident and, you know, kind of disrupted your life. So their motto is restoring the rhythm of your life. You know, again, their goal is to repair your vehicle, get it back to you as quick as we can. And then there you can see some of their core values that they have. They do have a lot of, spend a lot on training with their employees. Couple slides here, just kind of showing some of their industry recognition with various insurance companies that they work with. They work with a lot of car lots as well. But you see some of the awards that they have won. USAA, they do a lot with, Shelter Insurance as well, Farmers Insurance. This slide just kind of shows, it is a kind of a customer service rating for some of those other folks as well. Caliber comes in at 87.7% as far as customer service rating. Again, they have a lot of training. Caliber is a very good community partner as well. They spend, that slide there went up, it's about 15 million in training last year for all their employees. They do the Rhythm Restoration Food Drive Recycled Ride Program, where they work with a lot of veterans, and getting cars repaired and back to them. American Heart Association as well. Again, that's just another aspect of some of their community involvement. As far as site plan, you can see where most of our building is, about 16,000 square foot building is kind of shop space. The front 2,000 square foot of that will be office, you know, estimate riding, that type of thing. Customer, is there a? Customer parking in the front.
It's a pretty typical collision repair center.
Correct. Yeah, again, this back piece right here will all be screened off, sliding gates, our employees, and that's where we'll have cars back there again, as we're moving them around, awaiting repair, waiting parts. Customer parking here in the front. The only thing that is outside that building, we have a kind of a detail bay. It will be covered by the building, just be open on the sides. There's a, we'll wash down cars before we bring them.
Right.
Back to the front. But everything else will be inside. I've got a floor plan, kind of show you what goes on. There's an example with kind of a colored site plan with the landscaping that we'll be providing. And this slide, I think, was one that we just passed out. You can see kind of where we align to the neighborhood and their pond that's there. I want to say the closest house here is 268 feet away from the corner of the building There is the elevation of the building. You can see, you can see in the rear on the second shot and the third shot, kind of that covered area that will have the detail bay, and that detail bay has its own separate drain, and we'll put in a sand oil separator as well. This is kind of a floor plan that shows you where the bays are at. This section here will be the paint booth. The building itself will be fully sprinkled. That paint booth will be a separate structure that is built through another third-party vendor that will be, have its own ventilation, and it will be sprinkled as well. Typical Caliber project has got 20, 25 new employees. Most of those employees will be local, and they do have pretty good paying jobs. It's, you know, paint booth, the techs, again, you can see some of the numbers up there.
You mentioned training, so is that training done at this facility, or do you train these people some other place?
They will do some here, some other places, but mostly it's on, you know, the equipment that they're working on. Again, the paint booth, the, you know, the rack, that type of stuff.
Right.
But they do have some corporate training as well.
Okay.
This, just a little bit, kind of showing you about the paint booth itself, and things kind of have changed over the past 15 years, I would say, in the, in the paint booth world, where, again, it's all enclosed. Most of the requirements have you get 98% of the particulates out of the air, which we meet, and then, you know, our filters are changed regularly. Actually, it's all computerized, so it's really based on the use.
It's pretty well government regulated, correct?
Correct, correct. And that's what I'm saying, we've, we've got a separate vendor, that's all they do, is install paint booths for us. It will have its own separate plans, aside from the building. It'll be ventilated and approved through DEP. That's just another cut sheet on the, on the stuff. Again, we're the largest repair center in the United States now with this merger. Again, we, we are committed to providing that level of service, providing training to our employees. And with that, would be happy to ask, answer any questions.
Is there an air, is there an air conditioning system, or will you be having the bays open while they're working, or within the?
I need to check.
Talk a little closer to the mic.
Sorry. I was asking about the air conditioning, and if they would be working with the bays open during the day. I mean, it's hot, and I can imagine inside the building it would be pretty warm.
We typically have an air conditioning system. I would need to check the lease on this particular project. As you mentioned, a lot of times down here in Florida, we do put them in. Again, it's a, it's a help for us from a hiring standpoint, but I, you know, they will probably have the doors open some. But again, I think it will be air conditioned, so if that is the case, they would probably not have them open as much, have them closed. There will, there will be air conditioning on the office piece as well.
Right. Well, I know noise was an issue, so having those bay doors closed would eliminate that.
Good question. So Caliber Collision, they still do not have the DEP permit determination? The FDEP?
For the paint booth?
For the site. It says here that FDEP permit determination is being sought after by the current owners and will be given to the City of Tarpon Springs upon reception.
I don't know if that's us or the, or the owner of the property.
Yeah, and I can help answer that too. So we are at a stage of preliminary plan development approval, rezoning, and land use. They will need the countywide amendment. When that's all done, they come back for site plan subdivision and final plan development. It's like they're doing a new plan development. When you revise a plan development that much, you have to basically go through the process again. So those kind of items, we wouldn't require that much specifics. Our storm, for example, on stormwater, our engineers looked at it and are satisfied that stormwater can be met, but they will have to show, for example, that.
And just for clarification for the audience, for folks here, FDEP means Florida Department of Environmental Protection. I just wanted to be transparent with that.
I guess, one, to answer the stormwater question as well. When this property was built in 2007, they built, they had some wetlands down the bottom and built their pond, which we're tying into just as the same number of square footage that they had approved. So we're going through that permitting process now with the Water Management District. But they put in, again, they put in a lot of the water and some of the sewer, and then that pond as well.
Okay.
And with us as well, I mean, I've got my engineer and our traffic consultant as well, if you've got any traffic.
Well, just, excuse me, will, will everybody will get a chance to speak, and you can ask questions then? Go ahead, sir.
Well, I was just going to say, this area here, I believe is where the existing pond was, and it will stay. We're not, we're not messing with that.
So you're saying that the large pond that I see on there is one that the commercial people built when they developed the property?
It's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, you'll get a chance. Any other questions from the board? No. Okay, thank you, sir. Do you have someone else?
Thank you. My second witness is Scott Standard. He is a professional engineer here in Florida, and he's been very involved in the site design. I'm going to ask him to walk you through how the site functions, and some of the measures we're trying in an attempt to minimize impacts neighboring properties.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Scott Standard. As was just mentioned, I am with Commercial Site Solutions. We are at 21764 State Road 54, Lutes, Florida, and we have been retained by Cross Development to be the civil engineers for this. Between the staff presentation and what Mr. Armstrong presented and what Mr. Cohen presented, I won't rehash a lot of the, just overall, but I will get to some of the technical law, answer your question about the DEP and the, and the audience's question about the pond, or ponds, actually, there's two of them out there, but we'll get to that in just a moment. So from an engineering standpoint, site planning standpoint, a couple of highlights I wanted to hit on, and then I'm more than willing to take any questions we have from the audience or from staff on these. Mr. Cohen hit on the fact that the paint scrubbers are designed to meet all of the federal requirements of the EPA for scrubbing. It's 98% particulate matter removal, which also removes the odor as well. I know that's been a concern for the various residents. And their scrubbers actually exceed the EPA by a little bit. In terms of the site plan itself, as you can see on the screen up there and in the little handout that you have, the building is going to sit, I believe it's 83 feet, I've got it marked up here that I've done, from the rear property line, it's actually 123. Let me make sure I get the numbers right. 113. So the building itself is 113 feet from the rear property line. The detail bay that Mr. Cohen alluded to, where they wash the cars once they've been completed, is 85 feet from the rear property line, and it's 268 feet point-to-point, closest point that we could find for any existing home on the other side of that retention pond in their neighborhood, to where the closest point of the, of the Caliber Collision will be, to give some screening and buffering. In addition, there's an existing eight-foot screen wall along the eastern property line that was built as a part of the overall master plan development way back when. Adding to that is we're going to be coming back in with additional landscaping. Right now, there's none. It's, it's a case really where the developers back then did as little as they could because the economy was collapsing, and so they built the infrastructure they had to build by code, and then basically pulled out. So now that things have picked back up, the landscaping that would have been there had it been developed at that time, we are actually going to put in now on our part of the site. So you have the eight-foot screen wall, you have the additional landscaping with the trees and shrubbery, and then again, Caliber Collision installs their own perimeter screening around their site in particular for, for a couple of reasons. A, to screen the operation in general from the public. Number two is for security reasons. You, you know, if you've got a car that's damaged and it's just sitting there, somebody could walk by and steal something out of it, so they have to keep those secured and separated by themselves. I got a moth flying around, I'll try not to get distracted. In terms of the access and traffic, we actually have here with us the traffic engineer that prepared the, the transportation management plan in accordance with staff regulations. As was mentioned earlier, we have two trips over, it's 53, the de minimis impact's 51. So we're two over on that, which is why we did the transportation management plan. But I would bring to light the fact that had this been, or is this being built as a commercial development, which it was originally approved to be, the impacts for this particular use are actually much lower in terms of trip generation, and you have that in your packet there. The access points are all existing on US 19. You have the one that leads down to the Northern Tool. You have the additional one there where the turn lane is that the Caliber will be tying into. There are no other planned access points. Those will remain as is. Caliber will build it, it'll be a shared driveway, and if other users come in in the future, then they too would use that shared driveway. The stormwater question that came up, not to correct Mr. Cohen in front of the public, but I will, and that is that the pond that you, the area, it's actually a wetland that you see where the trees are right now, that's an existing one, and that was there before the development ever came through. The detention pond that was actually installed is just to the north and west of that, so it kind of wraps around that wetland area. That detention pond is considered a dry pond. We all know in Florida, there's really no such thing as a dry pond. They're wet a good bit of the time, but that detention pond was actually sized for the full build-out condition of this nine acre PD. And what that means is, in kind of an answer to the question about the DEP, the DEP regulates the state and the water management districts, probably telling you stuff you already know, but here in this area in Pinellas County, we're regulated by the Southwest Florida Water Management District under the DEP regulations. The pond was permitted through Southwest Florida Water Management District, again, for, excuse me, for the full build-out condition. Of that, the only thing that's tied into it right now is the Northern Tool. Everything else, you know, obviously has not been developed. There's an existing storm drain system that leads from the Northern Tool right down through the center of the site and dumps into that pond, the grass area there that you see just around the wetland. When they decised, when they did the sizing for that pond, essentially what they did, the original engineers, is they assumed an impervious condition, so they didn't know what all was going to come, but they knew something was coming, so they made their best guess. Assumed an impervious condition, got the pond sized for that, constructed for that, certified for that. We are required, as the applicant, for this particular development, to then go back to SWF MUD, and we do what's called a minor modification. So we apply for a minor modification of the existing permit, and that minor modification, we give them our proposed impervious areas, which I will point out, we're proposing a .7, a 70% ratio maximum impervious. That's actually lower than the land development use allows, but in effort to reduce our runoff, a little bit lower than what Cross typically goes with in terms of overall parking, but to fit on the site. But to fit on the site, to have something we felt could fit into the community, we reduced that a little bit. But we'll go in for the minor mod. We'll give them the, the impervious area. We'll give them our total runoff. We'll show that we're within compliance uh, of what was previously permitted and then hopefully the state reviews that and comes back and says, yes, you are in compliance with what was previously approved. They'll issue us the minor modification approval. I provide that to staff once we make final, our actual construction plan approval, assuming we can get through this process. So that's the environmental side of things. In terms of landscaping and buffer, I'll have my landscape architect here with me. As I did say, I have the traffic engineer here to answer any questions about traffic. Couple of other things I was gonna point out. I know Rusty Cohen did a pretty good job on that already. All of the work that's performed on these vehicles is performed inside of the building. There's no work performed outside. Uh, we had a question about sound, uh, and the doors are opening and closing as the cars are being moved in and out. So they are open sometime and, you know, we, we can't pretend that they're not. So there will be some sound. It's not much. We try to mitigate that as much as we can with the screening around the site and landscaping as well. The odor and particulate matter is taken care of by the scrubber system. Uh, the lighting, I know was a question that had come up. Uh, it's very actually low-level lighting and if I can ask what the hours of operation are? The reason I bring that up is the lights that are gonna be on during the night are simply for security. It's actually fairly low level. We have cut out what are called cutoff fixtures, which are basically light fixtures with shields on the back to prevent glare from leaving the site. Uh, and we, we need to actually exceed the requirements for the photometric design for that lighting to reduce our footprint, our foot candle footprint, um, to basically zero at the property lines. Uh, again, you know, a light is a light. You're gonna see it. You can't hide it completely, but we do everything we can to shield it, make sure it doesn't have an effect of glare on the neighbors. Uh, it works out well, this particular location, that we're on the backside of that pond for the adjoining piece of property, uh, which helps give us, again, a little bit of a buffer. I know I'm forgetting something I always do, but I think I've hit on all of them.
I have a question on the, you, you have an existing driveway that the Northern Tools uses and I see that they've already planned for a driveway. Are you using any of that or is this this property between your building and Northern Tools? That's still vacant land that could?
Yes, sir. That re, that will remain vacant. So whoever comes in after us, if somebody goes in on the piece just to the north of us, they would make the connection between us and the Northern Tool.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from staff or board? No?
Not for me.
Thank you.
Do you have anyone else that you want to come up?
No, sir.
Uh, how then do I address, I know the public has some questions perhaps to the developers and the people that are here. How do I go about that? How can they ask questions? Do they have to come up?
Yes, if they're, if they're gonna ask questions of the board.
What about of the participants or the applicant?
Well, then they'll both have to be up here.
Okay. Who do you have questions for? I'm asking for questions right now. So do we have any questions for any of the applicants? Okay. Come on up, state your name, address, please.
My name is Peter Connor, 1237 Black Rush Drive. My question's concerned the paint booth. Uh, what do you do with your, uh, replacement pads, the old pads? What do you do with them?
With the, the filters?
Yes.
Uh, we have a program where they get replaced by the, the vendor.
Okay, wh- where do you put them? Can you pull them out?
Uh, it, it happens instantaneously. We don't store them. They, they come and get them, they come and get them. It's, like I said, it's all based on the amount of usage. It's all computerized. That, that mixing will, will happen. Um, so they're, you know, cut down on the overspray. Again, that, that program we have with the, with our vendor where they, they come and get the, the filters.
Okay, so they're placed, one for one and they go?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah.
No storage? Okay. Uh, the other concern I have is, uh, the runoff. That, that wall in the back collapsed a few years ago and it was caused by Northern Tool, the runoff from there. The footers were very shallow. They weren't built right and it fell over. What's gonna happen now when you take away the absorption of the ground that's there, existing now, and you're putting a pad out there with considerable size?
Just, just a point of order that right now it is for questions of the applicant. Okay, and the, the relevant questions, so just.
So the question is, you're asking what's gonna happen to the existing wall that has fallen?
What are you putting in to prevent another collapse of the wall?
In terms of the, uh, what we're putting in for the stormwater and the collection of the stormwater, the, as you can see on the site there, right now, as he's describing, the, the water from the grass area, the Northern Tool, we'll stick with the grass here. The water from the grass area basically drains by gravity through the grass, some of it up against that wall there. I would question if the wall failed. Which storm event did it fail in? Was it during one of the hurricanes? Was it during a regular storm event? I don't know. But in terms of our runoff, what we're doing, everything's collected in a storm drain system and catch basin's on site, curb and gutter as well. All of that's then picked up and piped directly to the pond. So in terms of the Caliber Collision, there will be no runoff from our site running towards the wall. Everything actually would run away from that.
Thank you.
It, it was a normal rainy day in Florida. It wasn't a storm or anything that collapsed that wall, other than the runoff.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, sir.
Hey, my name's Richard J. Smith and I am, uh, live at 1898 Riverwatch Boulevard in Tarpon Springs.
Could you do me a favor, sir, and take your hat off and sign?
Be happy to. I wanted to talk about the pond and the runoff was certainly one of, one of my main concerns. I have a guess a question for the folks up here and also for the folks coming in with, with Caliber Collision. Are, first of all, are you folks aware of what's going on with Pasco County and the stormwater problem they have up there? In terms of flooding?
This has really nothing to do with this right now.
But it does, but it does. And I'll, I'm, I'm asking a question. Are you familiar with it? That's?
Sir, this is for questions of the applicant.
Of him? Of them? Excuse me, okay. I'll ask the questions. Are you guys familiar with what's going on with a stormwater problem in Pasco County? I, I'd like to. On your diagram up there, on the far right where the white starts, there's a row of houses right on the edge of your picture there. Right on the other side of that is a 20-foot easement of, that is presently being torn up to replace a 24 or 24-inch stormwater pipe with a five-foot, 48, 48 inches, excuse me, 48-inch pipe. That's supposed to relieve flooding in Pasco County. That stormwater pipe is gonna dump into the natural preserve area there that that pond borders on or is a part of. And my question is, have you guys considered that? Have you talked to SWIFT MUD about that? And, and the implications that are gonna happen to that when Pasco flooding problem comes flowing down through the Riverwatch subdivision into that natural preserve? We are concerned about the water runoff that presently goes into the ground from the rain that is now gonna be hitting hard surfaces, roof, parking lot and everything, and then dumping in. The question is, have you considered that? And the answer is?
There's actually two parts to that in, in terms of what's being considered. In terms of the improvements for Pasco County, uh, and what may be coming down that easement into that existing wetland area, tho- that modeling that would be done by the engineers for Pasco County would take into account anything that's adjacent around, I know, because I have to do that as well. Um, in terms of how it would impact our particular developed site, the, the statement that everything absorbs into the ground today simply isn't true. This site was designed to drain to that pond on the south side next to the wetland and it was designed to do so in a developed condition. I have to continue to point that out because I think it's important. This has been permitted by SWIFT MUD for a fully built-out condition. We are one part of that and we collect our runoff and we put it into that stormwater system. We do take into account tailwa- what are called tailwater conditions, which are downstream conditions. I get those from the county engineering office to let me know what they think the staging will be, which again is the elevation of that water and we take that into account into our design. I don't, I, I'm sorry, I can't answer much about Pasco side, but in terms of what we're doing, that's, that's how we take care of ourselves.
Thank you. Do you have another question, sir?
Well, I just noted the concern that we in the neighborhood don't know what's gonna happen when they finish that storm drain system from Pasco County. They've had some terrible flooding up there out of the Anclot River farther north of us.
Sir, do you have another question?
So, just wanted to make that statement. One other question about the traffic plan. I noticed in the traffic study that they had, they were over by two items. So the, the question is, there was a lot of discussion amongst us about public transportation, people riding bikes and stuff coming to work and we just were, I don't, I'll say, I was puzzled by that. Can you explain why that would fill in for most of the employees that are gonna be working at Caliber Collision? I looked at the salary things and most of those people can afford cars and I, I just was concerned about that because the traffic on 19, especially rush hour in the evening is, it's just horrible. My question is, have you guys, why would you include something like that in your traffic study when we notionally would have thought people would be driving, the employees would be driving cars to work?
Okay, in terms of the traffic, a couple of things. Number one, and, and I do have Mike Yates, I'll call him up in just a moment because he actually prepared the study. But in terms of pedestrians and, and bikes and so forth, we're required to do that as a part of the transportation plan. So we're not given a choice on that. Um, but secondly, what I also would put out or, or, or point out that's in that packet there is, as approved for the original PD, we had a total number of peak hour trips of 508 in the PM peak. That's what could be built there today if it was all commercial without coming back before this board. What we've seen built with the Northern Tools, 25,000 square feet, there's 140 total PM peak hour trips estimated for the Northern Tool. That leaves a net available, if you will, of 363 from what was originally approved in total PM, PM peak hour trips. Of that 363, this caliber is 53. So I point that out to show that if this were residential, or excuse me, a commercial development, which again is already allowed by the zoning that's there, it would be much higher. What we're saying is 53 and when I point out that we're two over, that's two over what's considered de minimis, which would mean no traffic impact analysis is required. But if I can, if I may, if you, okay. If there's any other questions, we'll see if we need the traffic guy. If not, I'll do the best I can with it. Hopefully answer your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Yes, sir.
How you, how you doing? My name's Charles Brown. I live at 1827 Riverwatch Boulevard. And I just had a couple of questions about the, the 2% of the paint chemical that, that escapes. Well, like it's, it's zoned right now for, uh, you know, um, retail and then, uh, we're just, you know, wondering why you guys are trying to rezone it to light commercial.
So that we can construct the collision center here.
Right. Right, it's, it's retail and now we're trying to go to light commercial.
Right, that's to build the collision center. It's been discussed this evening.
Okay, but why is the paint booth separate from the, from the rest of the stuff? Is that because it'll, could blow up maybe?
Um, it's separate from the building itself as it's a, again, a complete, it's a complete different structure. Uh, again, the building itself will be sprinkled. The paint booth will have a separate sprinkler system in it due to, again, the, the paint that's in there and, and things like that. But that is built by a separate vendor, not necessarily our, co- once we get the, the building built, our vendor will come in, permit that and, and build that paint booth.
And are those chemicals combustible?
Uh, we use water-based paints, uh, for everything in the paint booth. And again, it's all computerized from a mixing standpoint, um, and spraying standpoint.
Is it combustible?
Uh, we will probably have some combustible items in there. The fire department will have all of our MS3 data sheets, um, on everything that's in there, in that building.
And on the best day, this thing will still allow 2% of that chemical to escape, correct?
We, we will meet the requirements of EPA and the DQ.
With the best, that, that what you're using would still allow 2% to escape, correct?
Um, I don't think we said that. I think I said the EPA requires us to be at 98%, which we are. We're over that, actually.
Someone said that 2% gets out. I wrote it down. And then, are there also gonna be Air Tools at this location? Air Tools, like zip, 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 you know NASCAR, Air Tools?
Uh, we have a handful of pneumatic equipment. We do not do tire changes. Um, we do not do engine repair. We're strictly auto body and paint repair.
You do have to take parts of the car off and add them back on with Air Tools, correct?
Uh, yes, I've stated we do have some pneumatic tools.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public have any questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, sir? Please?
No, not, not right now.
Not right now?
These are just questions that are.
So any other questions to the applicant from the public? Okay, thank you. Well, okay, now, any? What do we do next?
So if, if you have any more questions of the applicant?
No, I do not.
Or you can move on and you can ask for, um, public, public comment?
All right.
And then the applicant will get a chance.
Okay. So at this time, if someone from the public would like to make comments, ma'am, this is your chance.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Franco and I have been a property owner at Tarpon Springs for 12 years, the last four of which are at Riverwatch. I'm at 1949 Anclot Vista. Um, most of my, I'd like to just have a show of hands of residents of Riverwatch who are here with serious concerns about this project. Thank you all for coming tonight and for signing petitions and petitioning your neighbors to help. Uh, most of my concerns were addressed by either the presentations from Cross and the engineer and the questions from my residents. Basically, we are just laypeople. We do not understand how a lot of this works. And please be patient with us because these are our investments. They're large investments. Major, our major investments are in our homes. And the reason we bought in this particular development is because it is a quiet secluded neighborhood near amenities. And this is what we're concerned about is losing that quiet neighborhood. The main issues as were addressed were the traffic, the air and water control, pollution control, the noise and the lighting. And, um, most of these were addressed by you. However, I understand that you are a large company and you do have now over a thousand locations. But our concern is why do the, is, does this particular building have to be in this location? Most of your buildings are already in a location which is zoned industrial, industrial parks. The, uh, website says that you are a community-friendly, community-concerned. The website says that you are a community-friendly, community-concerned development, uh, uh, community concerned, excuse me, um, company. And that as such that you should be very concerned about the opinions and concerns of your neighbors, your nearest neighbors, your butters, which is Riverwatch. I would appreciate that the board would consider, um, more, uh, pardon me, I'm sorry. Consider that, uh, the neighborhood, our neighborhood would be impacted. And what we invested in, what we bought in, we will not have if this project is allowed to go through. We are not opposed to anyone making a living. It's their right. I've been a business owner for three decades, but why in this particular location where there are several other areas which could be more well put to use? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Go ahead, sir.
So again, my name is Peter Connor, 1237 Black Rush Drive. Uh, there's a couple of concerns I have. One, again, goes back to the traffic. And I get the numbers and I get all that. The problem that we have is that, uh, since we have a turn lane coming towards our property, uh, we have a lot of vehicles that fail to recognize that and then pull through and, uh, go into turn lane that goes in that property. Problem is, that's where we come out at. Again, for I think the third time, our wall was hit last, the night before last, I guess. Uh, and a big chunk taken out. If I may, I'll point out what it was. So, this individual failed to get over, drove through and hit the corner of the wall, which also houses all of our infrastructure, tour, our landscaping and our well and all those kind of things, okay? So, it's the third time in recent history. Having tow trucks, which I assume you will have tow trucks bringing the vehicles in, which will have to slow down that traffic ahead, I think will cause another problem. People already using that as a lane all the way into, uh, the turning on the road at the northern part of Northern Tools. So, I'm concerned for accidents out there. The traffic study that was done a while back, they put in, I don't know what you call them, uh, these lineonnators, I think they're called, in the road to keep traffic from going through. Uh, they kept getting run over and destroyed. So, the Department of Transportation added fear in a different style to hopefully not have to replace those all the time. It's because of wild traffic that we endure out there, starting at 2:30 in the afternoon, going home traffic. It's horrendous till about 7:30 at night. The other concern I do have is, again, that pond that sits behind them, that wall, it was a huge problem for us before. You know, the community spent another $130,000 or so to replace that wall. You know, because nobody went all up to it. It was approved by Tarpon Springs to add to the wall without doing any further studies to see if the foundation could handle it. Okay, collapsed and then nobody would speak up and say, yeah, it's our problem. No, we take for it as a community. The other issue is, and I don't know what the stormwater, uh, project is gonna cause. None of us have an idea. We, when it rains really hard, we start to have flooding coming into our community, going across a little bridge we have in there. How much that will get impacted, we don't know. Adding more water potentially, you know, can actually make it worse. So, how do we get in and out of our community if it's underwater? Right? That's the only entryway we have. There's an emergency egress on the north side, but that's Pasco County. We don't wanna go there. We live in Pinellas. So, those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, sir, you have to come up?
Sure, please just stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Good evening. My name is Steve Wilitsky and I'm River, uh, I live on River, actually. And I'm here tonight, um, basically as just a homeowner, um, who pulls out of his driveway and goes out to 19 and seeing some beautiful things taking place. Palm trees are going up, we've transformed things, it's really starting to shape up and beautification is taking place. And I look to my left and I see car dealerships. I look to my right, I see car dealerships. I drive down the street, I see car dealerships. Everywhere you turn on 19, it's turning into a car facilitated type of a, 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 an organization. And it's overwhelming and it's to the point now where I, I say to myself, do we really, you know, obviously there's a reputation here which is good, the studies for engineering look good. But again, I'm thinking it from a standpoint of, does 19 really need another car-oriented, uh, business? And, you know, if it was a, um, a restaurant or an ice cream stand, I'd probably be up, I wouldn't be up here. But given the fact, uh, we're talking about something that's car-oriented and Furman has just taken over that whole corner when you pull out, the Ford dealership on the left, go down, you got all the car, I mean, everywhere you turn, there's something to do with cars. It's just in a mile radius of, uh, if there's been any study, there's probably 50 car-oriented businesses. That's one of my concerns. The other thing too is the, uh, impact on a company, uh, I'll say company, organization that's been a part of this community. I'm just talking about Furman itself has been around here since 1995, very active in the community. The impact that this, uh, you know, global, um, company is gonna have on their business. Um, I'm surprised that somebody didn't come tonight from their organization. They probably don't feel threatened. But again, here's a stellar organization that if you went to their website and you looked at how they've been involved in the community over the years, they're, they've done amazing things in Tampa and Tarpon Springs, um, the impact it'll have on them. So, I'm not really up here to, to talk about civil engineering or up here to talk about the company because obviously they've got a good reputation. Just a concern about more car-oriented business and the impact it's gonna have on the business across the street.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Conrad. I reside at 1249 Black Rush Drive. And I've got two basic questions that may lead to a few more, but the purpose we're here tonight, one of the main purposes for me is to consider the rezoning of this particular property that's, um, going from a commercial to a, a light industrial, um, usage. And I guess my question to the board, uh, is, would this-
Just to let you know that, that there, the board may, if you would wish to answer, but this is just for comments.
I thought it was questions.
Yes, sir.
Right now, it's just, just comments. If you have some comments, just let us know.
Okay, well, we had questions to the applicants and I thought we had questions. Is there gonna be a time?
The board's not gonna answer questions.
Will the board take questions?
For the chair, but it is a public comment and there was, you can ask questions of the applicant.
Well, I, I can do it as a comment. My concern is, could this facility be built under, um, the existing zoning requirements? And I'm concerned that if, uh, the zoning has changed for this one piece of property where you've split a, um, 9.9 acre parcel into three parts, but you're separating, uh, a commercial, commercially zoned piece of property, uh, and leaving two commercial sections that would leave it open to a change to, um, the light industrial. And that then these other, uh, which I would think would be a good, uh, stands a good chance to get changed to an industrial category and then the property may be open for any kind of light industrial usage. So, I'm concerned in that regard. So, there were two parts, one about the adjacent property and the existing piece, if it could be built under the commercial requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments? Okay, thank you. At this point, we will close the public comments and questions and leave it open to the applicants. You wanna address some of these?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your attention this evening. What I would like to do is address some of the comments, uh, made by the public who are here this evening. In, in, in no particular order, uh, Mr. Conrad was asking about, uh, you know, I call it, you know, potential for precedent. And I think our response to that goes to the, um, specificity of our request with respect to the IPD zoning. That's a site plan-specific zoning classification. You know exactly what you're getting when you approve the site plan as part of this application. If it changes in any material way, it comes back through this process, back to planning the zoning, back to the commission. And maybe it gets approved and maybe it doesn't. That's the risk that the owner applicant would take if he chooses to modify the site plan. So, I think it really goes to, it depends on what the next applications look like and how, what are they doing to minimize impacts and buffer and, and those sorts of things. What's the nature of the use? I, I think it goes to, to those sorts of questions. I guess it was Mr. Wiltsky, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, had a question about the Furman, um, company. They've been a significant client of our law firm for 30 years and I've done a lot of their work and I can, uh, feel comfortable saying that they're not, uh, threatened by the, uh, possibility of approval of a collision center. If you look at the steps that are being taken here, in our discussions with the staff before we filed, they made it really clear the priority was to have appropriate buffering here and we think we've done that. There's a wall, there's landscaping, limited hours of operation, everything's done inside. This is on US 19, folks. That's a pretty intense traffic corridor. We, I feel like we've beaten traffic to death, but I just wanna make the following point again, that as the staff report noted, the actual impacts of approving this use on this site would dramatically reduce the traffic that was previously approved. So, if you want to, you know, improve the traffic situation, approve the use, if that's your sole criterion. Um, and that seems to be beyond dispute. Again, as, as was noted in the staff report, we're only two trips above being de minimis in the PM peak hour and we think that's important. Stormwater, a lot of discussion about stormwater. From being on the governing board of the Southwest, Southwest Water Management District, I can assure you that the stormwater impacts don't get approved if they're going to go off-site. In other words, you have to control it on your site and appropriately so. Occasionally, you'll see drainage easements to a, a master pond like you see here. But with the current regulatory structure, you can't just spill your stormwater onto your neighbor. It's been prohibited as a matter of law for years and years and years, so it won't get approved unless that's been demonstrated scientifically by professional engineers, such as Mr. Sanders, that that will not happen. So, that's your comfort level there and it should, I would hope, be the comfort level for the neighborhood as well. Uh, in sum, uh, we believe we meet the goals, objectives and policies of your comprehensive plan. We believe that we have presented to you, um, a site plan and a zoning application, uh, consistent with, uh, being sensitive and doing the right thing and that we are, uh, worthy of your approval. I will note that the staff recommendation this evening is approval as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
May I ask a question? You may.
Sorry, I have a soft voice. I'll try to speak-
That's okay. I can hear you just fine.
Taking into consideration, um, now that we've had the public comments, specifically the capture rate and, um, the issues in Pasco, taking those into consideration and then combining them in tandem with the fact that you have not heard back from the DEP or the EPA, um, wouldn't it be more prudent to come to us after you've heard back from these agencies and, you know, apply or is there a reason for the haste?
Well, I, I think that though, it is very common in my practice to see developers go through this process first because unless we get the use approved, we're wasting our time and money and energy for everybody involved in the process. And that tends to be a very lengthy, expensive process. So, we wanna know first, we've got the use approved by local governments. It would be a condition of approval, obviously, that before anything can actually get built and a building permit gets issued, that we would have to have those in our hand before construction would ever begin. But that's typically why we don't go get those first.
So, it's an expense issue?
It's, it's time, except it's also the uncertainty. If the local government is that offended by the use and will not approve it, we, we would go through that. Why would we put the agency through that of having to review it? It just doesn't make sense for anybody.
So, in terms of a worst-case scenario, let's say this goes through this board, you're denied or you're not permitted this determination. Then what happens? Does it, it fails or what goes on from there is the-
I, I think that the, the application would fail if we can't come up with an approval. Perhaps it, you know, results in a modified application? I don't know. I've, yeah. It's very rare that a permit application will fail because there's almost always an engineering solution to it. But sometimes the engineering solutions are too costly.
All right, thank you.
My pleasure.
Any more comments, questions? Nope? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe I can close this now?
Yes.
Thank you and leave it to the board comment?
Correct. It's now for board discussion and I will just remind the board that, um, you are required by law to take into consideration only what you believe to be the competent, substantial and relevant evidence presented tonight.
Correct.
It's an interesting and certainly understandable concern of everyone, but I have a comment about it. I mean, this is US 19 and that property's been empty for commercial for years, probably even before a lot of these houses were built back here. And if a Burger King or BJ's or a Costco were to go in there, the traffic would be incredibly horrendous. And if a Burger King was in there, it would be till 2 o'clock in the morning. Sometimes you'd have traffic. So, that's just a comment from me to the board. I mean, this seems pretty minimal in, in my personal view. Anyone else have anything to say?
I have a, a comment to your point, sir. If, um, I would feel more comfortable, uh, if you have such a high degree of confidence with passing these environmental issues, um, I, I would feel more comfortable waiting, you know, until, you know, applying, coming back and then I would feel perfectly fine, you know, um, issuing a, a decision then, but I'm more, you know, I would like to sign with caution, but that's just my comment, if there's a high degree of confidence.
Well, again, the, the issue as, as he stated is the fact that you can't proceed if you don't know that you can even put a, a building on there. So, you kinda have to go through the process and we here, our goal tonight is just to say, is this gonna be rezoned or not? It's not, he still has to go through all these other regulatory issues. He could be denied in almost any other, any other forum. The, the commissioners could deny it. The building permit could be denied. There's so many things that could be denied from this. All we're here for is to say, are we going to rezone this piece of property or that's it? All we're here for is to say, are we going to rezone this piece of property or that's it?
I have one question made for the city. Is there a precedent in terms of applicants to, not y'all, but other applicants that are trying to rezone this? Is there like a precedent for that or no? To like rezone it, to go from, like, has there been additional industrial applicants?
For this property?
Or for just this?
So precedent is a word I've heard a couple of times tonight. There is no precedent in this because each one is specific. So you are looking at this applicant and that.
So is there a history of other applicants?
That may be static.
For this property?
That doesn't matter to us. I mean, all we're doing is deciding about this particular piece of property. Can we rezone it?
Yeah, only reason I ask that is because there's been a few public citizens here that have asked, you know, why here? Why do you want to rezone this? So I've just wondered if there's other companies that try to rezone this industrial. That's my only inquiry.
This particular property, I'm not aware of any rezoning applications since the CPD was passed. And to kind of answer the bigger picture, this will have to come back through for final plan development. That's when more detail will be required, including, you know, will they have their environmental approvals, stormwater approvals? So typically, an applicant wants to know, you know, can I get my land used in zoning and in this case countywide lined up? If the plan development doesn't meet the regulations, it cannot, cannot be approved or would not be recommended for approval. And as the applicant stated, planned develop, IPD, CPD, those are almost like a master plan type of a zoning. So it's for a specific use that's proposed.
Thank you all for your answers.
So the applicant looks like he wants to say something, but I think we've closed this now, have we not?
You have closed the hearing, but you'd like to ask a question?
I have.
That is, that's a few.
Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Thank you, and I will be brief. Thank you for your indulgence. I, the question about why, why, why? I think it really comes down to a property rights question. This property owner, here in Tarpon Springs, paying taxes, he has a right to petition his government and request a change. That's exactly what they're doing. And very respectfully, this application is properly before the board. And we think that we're entitled to an answer tonight. And we think that you, your choice is to vote yes or vote no, and I'm very respectful of that. But please be respectful, we believe of our right to have a decision from this board that you would pass along to the city commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the board?
For me personally, it's the noise would be a factor. I live in an area that has a lot of noise and so I totally get that. But we can't really put personal opinion into our decision-making, so that would be my only concern was whether or not the building could be actually enclosed so that most of the noise could stay inside.
Okay, thank you. I'd have to say that with the trees and the fencing, I think that they've tried to minimize that quite a bit. And I don't have a problem with that. So with that then, I think we've closed the, we've closed discussion now, I'm sorry.
The app, there was the app.
The applicant? Was the applicant?
No.
No, I'm sorry, we-
The applicant was allowed to answer the question from the board. The hearing has been closed.
I'm sorry, sir, but the hearing's closed. Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to hear a motion that we pass or not pass, application number 18-177, amendment to a plan development, amendment to an existing plan development, including preliminary development plan approval, amendment to future use designation from R/OR residential office retail to IG industrial general, and amendment to the zoning designation from CPD, commercial plan development to IPD, industrial plan development, in order to construct an automobile repair facility on 2.28 acres of land along the east side of US 19, approximately 427 feet north of River Watch Boulevard. The mouth was quite a lot. Do I hear a motion? Okay, no motion.
Motion must be made or the chair, you must pass the gavel.
I have a question. Because we don't have a full board, the applicant can reapply this, correct? It can come up at the next board meeting when we have a full board.
Yep, the applicant can decide to continue it, but it sounds like the applicant like has answered tonight. So then therefore you must vote on it tonight.
Okay. Then I will propose a motion that we approve, application number 18-177. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Do I have a vote, please?
Mr. Petron Tony?
I'll vote no on this.
Ms. McCumber?
Yes.
Mr. Seropoulos?
I vote no.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
So, where are we? We have, it doesn't-
We need three votes.
Correct, the vote, the motion is not passed.
The vote is not passed, okay?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Next, we move on to number seven, staff comments. Any comments from the staff?
No comments this evening.
Thank you. Any board comments? None. And number nine, adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All in favor, aye. Interesting.